I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
Will call please to start this?
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. De Maria.
Fairly here.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Mrs. Seabird.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Doan.
Here.
Mr. Aljidi.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Under consent agenda, please put personnel, ratification of personnel.
Thank you very much, sir. Next up, superintendent's announcements and spotlights.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. Good evening, other members of the board, and good evening to everyone that is here tonight. We do have two spotlights that we would like to share tonight, and so I would ask you all to join me up front. Our first spotlight is for Jenny Dean Elementary School. Jenny Dean Elementary School has been recognized by the Virginia Technology and Engineering Education Association, or VTEEA, by receiving the 2018 Program of the Year Award for its elementary school program. Tonight, Kate Green, Jenny Dean's instructional technology training specialist, and former principal, Dr. Zella Jones, who is now at Weems, attended the awards banquet last week, I mean, last month, excuse me, and received the award there. Since they are here tonight to officially share the award with the MCPS family and the community, I'm going to ask that they will come forward. Jorge Valenzuela, Chair of the VTEEA Awards Committees, had this to say about Jenny Dean. Your efforts at Jenny Dean Elementary School will help ensure that students in the program learn about design, engineering, and technology as part of the total elementary school experience. Further, your students will develop a significant degree of technological capability. The school will be recognized at the Virginia Children's Engineering Convention in February, where they will receive a $500 donation. Oh, okay. I thought the $1,000 is Kansas City, right? Yes, okay. And then they will also receive the International Technology and Engineering Educators Association Program Excellence Award during the National Conference in Kansas City in March, where they will also receive a $1,000 donation. So congratulations to Jenny Dean's faculty and staff for this incredible demonstration of innovation through technology. Congratulations. That's good. All right, everybody ready? Let's see, here we go. One, two, three. Let's do one more. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. So this summer, the Virginia Association of Trade and Industrial Educators named Osborn High School Cosmetology Teacher Arneiz Dotavala is Teacher of the Year. This is the association's highest meritorious contribution to the trade and industrial educators in Virginia. Ms. Dotavala is here, so can you come forward tonight? So let me tell you a little bit about this. The purpose of the Virginia Association of Trade and Industrial Educators is to promote the highest standard of professionalism among its members, bridging the gap between trade and industrial education with business and industry. It provides members with training, educational opportunities, and professional updates to create, within the trade and industrial education system of the Commonwealth of Virginia, a level of career training of the highest standards. They also promote quality trade and industrial education by maintaining affiliations with other professional, career, and technical associations, like the Virginia Association of Career and Technical Education, the Association of Career and Technical Education, and with Skills USA. It is supported by the Virginia Department of Education. Ms. Dotavala is a recipient of several awards and oversees a very successful program at Osborne, where students have maintained a 100% passing rate at the state licensing exam with high employment opportunities. Because of her proven work at Osborne, her contributions to the association include being Virginia's lead teacher for human services and appointment by the VDOE, which provides support for teachers statewide in the areas of cosmetology, barbering, nail technology, and aesthetics. In this role, her responsibilities include coordinating updates and classes at the state conference in Norfolk and being a resource for cosmetology teachers across the Commonwealth. Mrs. Dotavala is also the chair for the Human Services Cluster of Competitions for Virginia Skills USA, which includes five competitions in the areas of cosmetology, barbering, nail technology, aesthetics, and fantasy mannequin. It's something to see if you go to Osborne and see how these students orchestrate all of this. Additionally, she serves as the advisor for the National Technical Honor Society at Osborne. We are so honored to recognize you tonight, and congratulations on being the Teacher of the Year for the state. Congratulations. This concludes our spotlights for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Next on the agenda, board committee reports. And I believe we only have one board committee with a report, and that will be the Finance Committee, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the period of the summer, and I think this entire board, many members of the community, were aware, we had a joint finance meeting between city council and the school board, culminated about a week ago with an action that has now been referred to the City Finance Committee formally. There were a lot of meetings. We didn't always agree. Sometimes we weren't even cordial. But I believe in my heart what's important is that we all were focused on a goal, and that is, we must meet the student enrollment capacity needs of the schools. And the continued student enrollment we have means we either put a lot of trailers all over town, or we build a new building. The other sad reality that we were able to demonstrate to council is that the cost of commercial construction disproportionately outpaces inflation every year. So the longer we wait, the more the cost of the school increases, and significantly. I think we're on a path now with where we got to as an agreement, that, and it passed, by the way, five to one, and I appreciate Mr. De Maria's dissent, because he really spoke as a true member of the school board with, "We may be sub-optimizing. Is this the best the city can do in prioritizing resources of the city?" But we're able to, we believe, get it, that we can have hopefully occupational use in 2021, 2022. We'll see where that ends up. We've made a lot of agreements relative to funding from the local, from the government body, as far as a percentage of it being dedicated into, let's call it a fenced-off account. We'll make a one-time contribution of that with state revenue coming in this year, which is over expectations, as well as a one-time contribution in last year's money. Bottom line is, council will, in their committee, now consider that on the 12th of September. They've also allowed the 19th of September, so they'll begin those discussions. They also will discuss our modified budget on the 12th of September, Mr. Chair, and that is following their formal process, and that is the budget that we passed back in June, where we were appropriating the additional state revenue. So that's my report, sir.
Thank you very much. And I have to thank the Finance Committee. We have committees which we all sit on, but the Finance Committee has put in some extra hours and a lot of hard work and time, a lot of travel, back and forth from DC, to make means, to meet with city council on top of regular finance meetings. So I pledge you all for coming to the meetings, and the board members who came to the meetings as well. Thank you for your hard work. I really appreciate it.
And a big shout-out to Mrs. Kiefer, Mr. De Maria, because we were all there together every meeting, and the school board spoke with one voice consistently.
Agreed. Thank you. Next, board comments. First up, Mr. Aljidi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everyone's had a good start to the new school year. I just have a short reminder for Mayfield and Baldwin's immediate parents. Mayfield Back-to-School Night for 5th graders is Wednesday, September 5th, and the following day for 6th graders, on Thursday. For Baldwin, both 5th and 6th graders will be on Wednesday, September 5th. And that's all.
Thank you very much, and welcome back to school. Next up, for her first comment, Mrs. Doan.
Thank you. As fun as summer may be, I'm so glad to be back in school, doing the things I love to do. I want to express my gratitude to the board for allowing me this great opportunity, and I look forward to working with you this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board member comments, starting with Mr. De Maria.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anything prepared, but then again, I never have anything prepared, so what the heck. Considering what Mr. Albrecht said, again, as I like to address the thousands of people watching on TV, the ball is now in the court of city council, and as far as funding goes, city council needs to know that the citizenry of Manassas supports our schools and supports funding for our schools. We had seven, eight joint meetings, and they went fairly well, and there were some rough points, but it goes to show that sometimes city council doesn't completely understand the importance of our schools, or, that's not really fair, because I think they do, but they don't know exactly what we need. And this body does know what we need. We need more than what we're getting now from all of our funding bodies, not just city council. Most of where our lack of funding comes from right now, I believe, is from state, but they're not going to make it up. And they're putting it on the localities, just like every other thing, so that means the locality has to pick up the ball, and it'd be nice if the citizenry would let the city council know that they support supporting our schools. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams.
I don't have any prepared comments either. Getting prepared for school has been quite busy for our household, but I want to welcome all the teachers and all the students to school, and I hope everybody focuses, works hard, play hard when it's time to play hard, and enjoy the year, and let's have it be very, very successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Seabird.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to wish everyone a wonderful new school year, and a warm welcome to Audrey Doan at your first meeting tonight. Thank you for representing the students of Manassas City Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to Arneiz, I'm going to mess up your name, but anyway, congratulations on being the State Teacher of the Year, and congratulations to Jenny Dean Elementary School. Last time I spoke to the teachers about coming back to school and how wonderful it is, and for the students tonight, I just want to wish you a happy new year. We've started a new year, and with our calendar new year, you would make resolutions, and I hope each of you out there watching us is making resolutions for a great school year. And make, not only make your parents and your teachers proud, but make yourself proud. So have a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A sincere welcome back to everybody. This is why we're here. The last two days, starting back to school, educating children, that's what we're about. The last couple of weeks, I've been all over the place. I was in Charlottesville last week with the Virginia School Board Association. We had a big focus on school safety. Lot of interesting discussion out of that. Couple of interesting snippets, just for everyone's knowledge. Fairfax County Public Schools' school safety officers is one of the largest police departments in the state of Virginia. How's that for an interesting factoid? Throughout the Commonwealth, people are looking at what to do with school safety, both uniformed school resource officers as well as school safety officers. We've had significant discussion of the law, the legal differences between them, especially as, in fact, one of the most significant differences involves the Virginia retirement system and how they're treated by VRS. A couple of jurisdictions had some interesting ideas using the sheriff's department and specific constitutional authority with special conservatives of the peace, deputy sheriffs, if you will. The Attorney General today ruled that special conservatives of the peace cannot carry a weapon in schools. That was a significant opinion on the part of the Attorney General. I appreciate his taking that stance, because it really was going to open Pandora's box. Last week, I was also in Chicago with the National School Board Association, with all the presidents of the states. I was able to testify to Deputy Secretary Zias on school safety. Really interesting perspective, and we talked about how schools, and what I testified, is schools are soft targets, and what is the federal government doing, especially in the Commonwealth of Virginia, because more than anything, Virginia looks like the nation. We have a lot of poverty, we have affluence, we have Appalachia, we have urban areas, we have everything in between. We look like the whole US. Part of one of the things I did there was I participated in a poverty simulation, which I've always wondered why someone goes into the Comcast office and ends up throwing the computer on the floor. I now understand. It was a half-day scenario, and for 40 of us to go through it, it took about 100 people to actually set it up. It was very labor-intensive, but it simulated the environment, because in this conference room we're there, and of course, if you didn't make your rent payment, your chairs were taken away, which meant you were homeless, and they were robbing people, and all the various things, and all of the actors were trained in how to deal with this in a very bureaucratic, slow way. And just the stress that feels while you're trying to deal with the normal family situations, and it really was a wonderful simulation, and it really, all of us who took it, really walked away with a true understanding of what our families and schools are going through every day. Next couple of weeks, I'll be with the Virginia Chamber on a conference on the workforce of the future, and also the 5th of September, the Virginia Senate Subcommittee will be out at George Mason University talking about school modernization, and I'll be testifying there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Albrecht. Next, Mrs. Kiefer.
Thank you, and I'm going to be quick, but I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations to the superintendent, the staff, and everybody that puts together. The first week back to school is tough. There's a lot of work that goes into it that I think people don't realize. Things come up throughout the day, the principals know this, and they just handle it masterfully. So just wanted to both congratulate and thank everybody involved with getting our kids back in the school. I also, we talked a lot about the Joint Finance Committee, and I think that Mr. Albrecht and Mr. De Maria said it well. I just wanted to do a shout-out to the people who really have put the work behind our ability to have that meeting. Andy Hawkins and Lee Miller, they've listened to our requests, they've had to go back and forth a million times for things, to all the staff who came out, whether it was for council work sessions, or for, you know, just these sessions alone. That's time away from your homes, but we appreciate the dedication, and we couldn't have had the conversations we had without the two of you and your team. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. First, again, welcome, Mrs. Doan and Mr. Aljidi. We love having you here and can't wait to hear your comments and your feedback, and you have some great comments tonight, so thank you very much. Congratulations to Mr. Dotavala, and then also to Jenny Dean for their awards and the fine work you're doing. It's always great to see our work being recognized. And welcome back to all the staff and the students and their families, because one thing that folks forget, my dad was a teacher for 40 years, and when he went back to school, we went back to school, because of papers and late hours and things of that nature. So I know families contribute as well, so welcome back to all the families of the staff and the students. I wish you all a great school year. Next up, consent agenda. May I have a motion, please? Oh, yeah. I always do this. I think it's kind, it's like, for anyone, but psychological, because I want to explore our citizens' comments, so. Are there any citizens' comments? No. Okay, see? I kind of know the word. All right. Next, and we do welcome citizens' comments. Any citizens out there, please, if you want to come comment, please. We welcome them. The consent agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, move the school board of the city of Manassas to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Kiefer, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes 7-0. Next up, discussion agenda. The first topic is student achievement. Summer 2018 activities and projects update. That will be Dr. Saunders.
Good evening, Chairman Williams, Vice Chairwoman Kiefer, Dr. Newman, and members of the board. We are here tonight, and I say "we" because you will hear from the executive cabinet members, and you can see some of our other team members in the audience, to recap the events, the planning, the activities, and all of the work that took place over the nine-week summer period to prepare for the students' arrival yesterday. So it's my pleasure to kind of start with that process, I think. There we go. So first off, we're going to talk a little bit about the student activities and opportunities. We are so fortunate in the city of Manassas to provide so many opportunities for our students and families. This summer, we provided enrichment, remediation, and exposure to real-world careers in many different ways. Manassas City Public Schools hosts a large number of camps for our students on our own campuses and in our community. This summer, we offered programs to more than 2,000 students in the city of Manassas. That's amazing. The summer, we continued our fire and rescue camps, our police camp, our children's engineering, basketball, and band camps. Our engineering camp alone had 180 students across the city attending that. We were excited to add the Build a Guitar Camp, which was featured on Voice of America, and we held the annual summer art symposium from a matching grant with the National Endowment of the Arts and the Virginia Commission of the Arts. We also held summer school for grades pre-K through 12, continuing our tradition of the Summer Nest Program, which is our pre-program for those kindergartners that are, that joined us on Monday. It's an opportunity for them to learn what school is about early on, and we added in those, our PIP program, which are pre-K students that come for those few days, as well, as well as time with their parents. I'll also just share that over the summer, we spend, Shema Batista, she's a wonderful asset to our community and to our school system, she personally registers 300 pre-K students that attended our school yesterday. Those meetings, she holds those with families and with the students. The four-year-olds come into central office and spend some time with us, but through that summertime, she personally has conversations with every single family and welcomes them to the Manassas City Public Schools. So she is a tremendous asset to us. Finally, we held many back-to-school events, open houses, orientations, activities for parents and students across the division. I'll highlight one, that one of the pictures up there is Ms. Goldsung. On August 22nd, the staff at Baldwin Elementary boarded two school buses and went out to connect with kids in the community at what they called a "pop-up popsicle party." It was a little rainy, but they still enjoyed the opportunity to really connect with their community, with their students, and you can see them enjoying some good popsicles to get them excited for their first days at Baldwin Elementary. So the students in the community had a lot of opportunities to really engage with us over the summer, and 2,000 kids over that nine weeks is really quite an experience. In addition to that, our staff were just as busy as our students and families in the summer. Summer is the perfect time for our staff to reflect, relax hopefully a little bit, reflect, learn, and collaborate. More than 360 staff members attended conferences, workshops, professional learning activities such as PBL World, Project-Based Learning. We had VASSP, Groups of People that Attended That Particular Conference. We had staff who were presenting themselves. We had some staff presenting at VSBA. We had the Better Lesson Design Studios for teachers in K through 12. Our mentor-teacher training and various leadership trainings across the division. Dr. Cramp and Ms. Keegan hosted the Aspiring Leaders from Manassas City Public Schools. We had 12 additional aspiring leaders come into the fold this summer, and they will continue to work with those aspiring leaders as they, as the year goes on, and meets with them. We also met with principals and assistant principals, and had leadership retreats and convocation, and lots of different activities for, for our staff to participate in should they have chosen to do that. Additionally, this is also a perfect time in the summer for us to really reflect on our curriculum, to look at the data that we receive in the, in the spring, and then start to look at, have teacher teams work together to really make those modifications. So we had more than 130 teachers participate in summer curriculum writing, and that's done in teams. Teachers really work through that on their own. They look at the pacing guides, the curriculum guides, and really look at that data and make those adjustments. So all in all, we've had a great summer between student activities and staff opportunities. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stone to talk about student services and security.
Thank you. So the events this past year, both around the country and in our own school division, certainly brought a greater focus on safety and security. So we used our time this summer to reflect on our safety and security processes, as well as our student services department as a whole. While we have amazing people and plans in place, it's really important that we keep current on all the things that are out there going on, and what we should be doing in our own division with our students, to meet the needs of both our students, our staff, and our community. So we focused in the following areas. I am certain there are some things I am going to forget, because they were all very busy and did a lot of great things. In the student services department, one of the things we worked on implementation for over the summer was the U-Science Platform, and we'll talk about that in a little while. We also were accepted into the fifth cohort of the Virginia Tiered System of Supports, which brings professional development to our school division from the Virginia Department of Education, as well as some funds to conduct that professional development and materials that may go with it, and that is all around our students and the interventions they may need as they go throughout the school year. We worked on our Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. That, again, is part of that Virginia Tiered System of Supports, and it's that framework for how our schools are using data to look at how our students are doing in terms of student conduct, and how we can better support them, either throughout the day, in different areas of the building, but giving them information to use moving forward. In health services, she has a lot of information that comes from Virginia Department of Ed, the Health Department, and changes in the way that we are doing immunizations or different health requirements. She standardized all of those practices, but also worked on implementing an electronic health record. So this school year, our nurses will have access to an electronic record where they won't have to do paper and pencil. Everything they were doing was on paper, which can get difficult when you're trying to find something quickly. This gives everybody better access to our students' health records. In the Risk Management Department, one of the first things we did was update all of our crisis management plans. We talked about that briefly, but I really have to give a shout-out to all of our school safety coordinators. They came together as a group. It was a difficult process. It is a very long document, but they worked really hard to update each and every one of those for their schools and all of the things that go along with that. Our safety coordinator at Baldwin Elementary was requested through our city emergency manager to present at the Region Four Safety Conference. They presented our reunification process. Very proud of all of them. The staff at Baldwin, led by their school safety coordinator and the principal, gave that presentation and got a lot of positive feedback from the Region Four representatives that were there to hear about that. We also have been looking at, there are certain groups of folks, we are really good at training all of our teachers, they know exactly what to do in any kind of crisis situation. However, sometimes we forget those groups that are only there for brief periods of time. So this year, we have a plan for our cafeteria staff, which worked extremely well when we had a brief incident at Hayden on our first day of school. We also have plans implemented for our bus drivers, who said, "Hey, we've never had any kind of training, and what would happen if we had students on our bus and there was an emergency?" So we've had some great feedback in the really working together to get all those plans situated and training that goes along with that. And the 2018 School Safety Conference, our SROs, our school's safety Our Safety Coordinator at Baldwin Elementary was requested through our City Emergency Manager to present at the Region Four Safety Conference. They presented our reunification process. Very proud of all of them. The staff at Baldwin, led by their school safety coordinator and the principal, gave that presentation and got a lot of positive feedback from the Region Four representatives that were there to hear about that. We also have been looking at, there are certain groups of folks, we are really good at training all of our teachers. They know exactly what to do in in any kind of crisis situation. However, sometimes we forget those groups that are only there for brief periods of time. So this year, we have a plan for our cafeteria staff, which worked extremely well when we had a brief incident at Hayden on our first day of school. We also have plans implemented for our bus drivers, who said, hey, we've never had any kind of training, and what would happen if we had students on our bus and there was an emergency? So we've had some great feedback in the really working together to get all those plans situated and training that goes along with that. And the 2018 School Safety Conference, our SROs, our School Safety Officers, and our School Safety Coordinators were all invited to attend, and many of them were able to attend that together. It was a great time for them to both hear the information and talk about as a group how they work throughout the division, providing those safety things for our students. And at this time, Mr. Hawkins will talk about school facilities.
Good evening. We've been very busy this summer. I want to give you some updates on some of the major projects that we've accomplished during this nine weeks. So we've replaced the, all the Energy Performance Contract projects are with within the approved time schedule. We've replaced the HVAC equipment at both Osborne and Metz, and they are fully operational at this time. All the lighting upgrades at all selected schools will be completed by mid-September. All the water conservation upgrades at all schools have have been completed, and the building envelope upgrades at the designated schools have all been completed. Metz Auditorium Upgrade, we've had all the carpets been replaced, all the stage and orchestra floors have been refinished and painted, all the sound system has been replaced and upgraded. Stage curtains will have been replaced. We still have a little bit more to do. That'll be finished by the end of this week, and the auditorium projector is in the process of being replaced. I think it'll be completed by by next Monday. Metz and Osborne hallway floor replacement, all the hallway flooring at Metz has been has been replaced, and the front hallway at Osborne and the west wing at Osborne have also been replaced with low-maintenance LVT type of tile, luxury vinyl tile. Other projects that have been done at Metz, in a collaborative effort with with the IT Department, every classroom has an interactive projector and whiteboard. Almost all the chalkboards have been covered with whiteboard material. I think we still have four or five of those left to to complete. All the carpet in the library and administrative offices have been replaced. All of the carpet that are in the band and the core areas will take place over the winter break. Classroom furniture will be replaced in approximately forty-five, forty-five core classrooms within the next six to eight weeks. Though, we're very proud of the Osborne High School Makerspace is nearing completion. All renovation aspects of the project will be completed by the end of this week. The casework will be installed in mid-September, with all technology and other equipment installed no later than October 1st. Another big project for us this summer was repainting of Hayden Elementary School. That was a particularly difficult project because it had wallpaper all over their whole school. They had to have that torn down first and then repaint it, the whole school. It's it's beautiful. I hope you will go and visit Hayden. We kept up with our bus replacement cycle. We have, we've replaced five school buses this year. We purchased three school resource officer vehicles, and our GPS, our Global Positioning System on all of our school buses will be fully operational by October the 1st. We've altered approximately 100 bus routes to meet the the new start in dismissal times, and we have made every effort to enhance the efficiency of the of the routes throughout the city. We've prepared over 9,000 breakfast meals this summer and over 11,300 lunch meals to summer school students and community members under the age of 18, all free of charge. So there's a lot more projects that we've done, a lot more things that we've completed, but those are the major gist of what we've done this summer.
Good evening. We've been working in information technology since the day the students left, nonstop and still still going on. So as Mr. Hawkins shared, we had a focus on instructional systems this summer, particularly with our interactive projectors. We installed 69 brand-new ones just in Metz alone this summer, and part of that was also transforming chalkboards into whiteboards to be able to use as projection surfaces, and we supplemented Baldwin Intermediate projectors with a few additional ones and had just a handful of sub-ceiling-mounted interactive projectors throughout the the division to meet needs. We implemented IP broadcasting systems at, we now have it at eight of our nine schools, and what that does is it gives our schools capability to do their in-house morning and afternoon broadcast over the network, and we've abandoned the aging cable TV infrastructure. And in fact, Mr. Hawkins' crew this summer, I think, removed the televisions from a couple of the schools from each of the classrooms, so all of that legacy technology is coming out, and this gives us all types of new features. The broadcast can be viewed on any computer. They can project it using our interactive projectors. Gives us some future capabilities. Our team has been busy with our upgrades to Windows 10. When I reported in May, we were at 86%. We're now standard over 96%. Our total computer inventory is about 9,500 computers, so almost 1,000 computers just in that span alone, and we, our goal is to have that done by the end of the calendar year, far ahead of Microsoft's schedule to discontinue Windows 7. As terms of infrastructure, we continue to work on our internet circuit, our second internet circuit getting into the system. In fact, if you were to buy central office today, Cox Business, who is our vendor, was actually digging in the parking lot, bringing the fiber physically into the building finally after weeks of getting permits and and things, those things approved. And so the anticipated completion date for that is late September, and then we'll augment that with our internal equipment, and so hopefully within the next six to eight weeks, we'll have that up and operational. It will immediately double the bandwidth for the division and also give us some some fault tolerance or redundancy in case one fails, the other one stays up. In conjunction with that, we've been doing a lot of data center upgrade work. In in June, we upgraded our internet content filtering system in advance of this expansion of the bandwidth to be able to handle all of the the additional requests. We just received new data center network switches that will be, they're our perimeter defense that will go for this new internet circuit. Those will be going in place in the next couple of weeks, and then we've done our routine application updates of Power School, Microsoft Exchange, some of our course systems that we do each summer. Those went without without a hitch. One of the big projects we tackled, really was a year-long project, was our Google Domain rearchitecture. We took the division from three separate Google Domains. We had our staff domain, we had a K6 and a grade seven, 12 student domain. All those have been collapsed into a single domain. That gives us greater support capabilities from central office and from our school technology staff. It also allows us with a greater feature resources to be able to provide to students and staff thus far. We did have some hiccups. I wanted to announce that, because I got contacted by a student through Let's Talk yesterday, that we've got those those hiccups resolved, and that sometime later in September, all students will have the opportunity to log into their former account and grab any files and data and transfer those into their current account. That's all being worked out through the school's technology team, and the school will be communicating that to the students. So that was all in the plan, and no data was lost. I reassured the student, we haven't, nothing's been deleted, so things are going great there. And then another year-long project that that we culminated over the summer was our print management. It was two phases. One is the copier refresh. This summer, we retired a lot of our copier fleet and brought in newer models, and in part of that, we expanded from 39 machines to 47 in the division. And then we also implemented new configuration options to help our staff. Everything is what we call print hold, secure print hold. Nothing prints out at the copier until the user goes and logs in. It helps for security. And also, we implemented building-based queues. No longer does you have to print to a specific copy. You present, you print to the building queue, and you can go to any machine in the building and release your job. So I'm trying to do that for added convenience to our staff members. And then finally, our printer realignment, we worked all the way since last summer. In fact, when we started working with principals on identifying opportunities for printer reduction and printer efficiencies, had them provide feedback and locate, put printers on maps as to best, as how they best saw it to be utilized. We executed that this summer, and we reduced our printer fleet by two-thirds, going from more than 600 devices to just under 200 division-wide. So our hope is that a lot of the volume shifts now to the copiers, which are far more cost-effective to print to, freeing up budget funds for other areas for the division in the future. Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kiefer.
Summer in the public school division and the Human Resources Department means two things, hiring people and outprocessing employees who have left the division. This summer, the Human Resources Department conducted 18 new employee orientations for 98 instructional staff, 18 classified employees, and three administrators. The in processing of new employees include inputting employees into all the software, talent ed, perform records, absent management units, and their electronic contract. We also verify college degrees for all of our instructional administrative staff. We process background checks, counsel new staff so that they can obtain teacher licensure with the state of Virginia, and any applicable endorsements and process you verify. During this time, we also process employee transfers, lane changes, 241 summer school hires, sick leave transfers, sick leave payouts, hire new substitutes, and process exiting employees from all applicable software. Our benefit staff also process post-employment benefits for all of our employees who left the school division. They conducted one-on-one meetings for both new employees and staff exiting to discuss pre- and post-employment benefits. They created a new employee benefits page on my MCPS and attended hybrid disability training. We've scheduled a back-to-school bowling party, which will be August the 30th, and we finalized the Virginia 529 program, which will be rolling out soon to all of our employees. The 403 Roth accounts became available to employees this summer. An electronic benefit package was created, thus ending paper, which will be mailed or available to to staff. That was emailed to each employee prior to her scheduled, his or her scheduled new employee orientation. We completed over a year-long project where we took all of our paper personnel files. They were scanned in North Carolina, and we downloaded them so all former present employees have their own digital personnel file. So we are continuing to scan active employees' files. So one day, all the paper will be gone, and everyone's file will be digitized. So that was our summer.
So I think you can hear from the different departments and staff members that we had a tremendous amount of work and opportunities and activities that are taking place in the division in that nine-week period with the single focus of our students and anticipating their arrival yesterday. So that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. You all did such great work. We appreciate it. A lot of folks think that summertime is when folks rest, but you obviously don't, so thank you for all your hard work. Any questions, comments from board members?
One comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Williams.
I exactly what to follow up on what you just said. The amount of work, planning, collaboration, project management, to get all the all the things done that you've got to get done in such a short period of time is really impressive, and I thank every single one of you for everything that you do. Thank you.
Just one question, Mr. Chair. 2,000 students, is that a duplicative number or a non-duplicative?
Oh, it could be duplicative. It is a rounded number between summer school, the different programs. We also have kids that go offsite, you know, our summer governor's academy, governor's schools, that students go to different activities. So it's a general number, and it's most likely duplicative.
But it's roughly 25% of the student population if it wasn't. It's huge.
Correct, correct. Andy would tell me that we use the schools way too much because he's trying to get things done, and we're still teaching them in there. So I think Andy probably would say it's more than 2,000.
Mr. Hanlon? Mr. DeMerry?
Thank you, sir. Duplicative is a really cool word, isn't it? That means duplicated kids. I learned that from these people. You learn something sitting up here. Mr. Hawkins, don't get up. The SRO vehicles, have they been, have they arrived?
We have one, two on the way, and they are, we are waiting for once they arrive, which it should be very soon. Then they will have to go to the maintenance shop to have all the lights and sirens and paint, and they'll be converted into a a police vehicle at that time.
Okay. So they're coming soon?
Coming soon. Hope by the end of the month.
Because if you've seen the old ones, boy, we need to get these cars in here, because they're pushing them into the parking lot now. Thanks, sir. And the summer meals, we do a lot of important things in this school system, and feeding our children, I know most of that money comes from the feds, is that correct? I'm not always a big fan of the federal government when it comes to education, but when they feed our kids that are hungry, I greatly, greatly appreciate that, and the work that we do to make sure they get fed is greatly appreciated. So thank everybody who does work on that across the board. Thank you, ma'am.
See you, Barrett.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, Finance and Operations, Utility Update, Mr. Hawkins.
Can you make it bigger, please? So when we, every quarter, give you an update on our utility usage, this is not a cost. These are all consumption numbers, whether we're talking about gallons or kilowatts per hour. And you can see where in some cases we've made progress, in other areas, we need to areas to work on. But the main number that I go by is these consumption per square foot, because I can compare us with other school divisions across the nation on how do we look? I mean, so for example, if you were to look at Hayden, you would think, well, we went down 157,000 gallons. What is great? But at 16 gallons per square foot, it's outside the norm of where other school divisions across the state are. So we still have some work to be done at Hayden, even though all of the data is positive. You can see Dean had went down 765,000 gallons, but we had a leak at it, Dean, that we fixed in the in the spring, and so that that number will be significantly better going forward. Other areas of concern, we we were having, we've tested the water at Osborne from from the meter to the school, so we don't have any any leaks at the coming into the school. So we are now proceeding on to the next phase and looking throughout the school. We believe that we have an issue at the high school that we need to be be looking at, which is over 622,000 more gallons. But all of these these numbers are red flags to us, gives us direction on which way where to go, and then to also look at how we stand across the country. You can see with the electrical consumption, where, you know, Osborne has gone down like 500,000 kilowatt hours, which is all which is all great and everything, but we need we just need to also compare that number with how other school divisions across the nation are are doing it on a per-square-foot basis. None of these numbers actually reflect where we are with the Energy Performance Contract. They have just started implementing all of those during the month of July, and I took a peek at today. We got the utility, I was notified late this afternoon of what the utility costs were for the month of July, and we compared month of July this year to the month of July last year, and and our water consumption has gone down 44%, and our electric use has gone down 20%, and they're not even through, they've only implemented it at this time, by the time July was through at Osborne and Metz, they hadn't been to Mayfield and all the other elementary schools at that time. So I'm expecting by our next report that we will have some some better news to report to you. We will be, we've also, one of the problem, one of the issues that we have out here is we have some a significant increase in the gas usage at at Williams, and we're we're calling the gas company. We've called the gas company, they're coming out and doing tests to see, you know, is there anything, any reason why we have such a significant increase in those in that area? So we're using these documents to to highlight areas of concern and to and to prompt us to go look and see if we can figure out an explanation for them. But with the Energy Performance Contract coming online, like I said in my, in the earlier report, by the Energy Performance Contract upgrades are really ahead of schedule. earlier report, by, the energy performance contract upgrades are really ahead of schedule. They were not supposed to be completed until approximately January of next year. I think that they will be through in all substantial aspects by, by October. So that's better for us, since we get those upgrades quicker, we will reap more, the faster they're in, the more savings that we will be able to generate between, in, in this school year, which will save us more funding. For example, if, if you were to look at the electric bill last July, it was, for the division, it was over sixty-five-hundred dollars just in, in the month of July. This July, it was thirty-four-hundred dollars. So we've, we've saved almost fifty percent of money from just one July compared over to the other. So multiply that, if we continue that trend over, over the next ten, eleven months, you can see how much money that'll be for us. So we have a mixed bag here tonight with good news, but we will, we are continuing to pursue all efforts to make our, our utility usage more, more efficient. Are there any questions, concerns, comments about the report tonight?
Questions, comments? I do have one item. So I'm, I think it's wonderful we have these numbers to help us discern how efficient our consumption is. Something that occurs to me, though, with newer buildings, they're going to be more efficient. I wonder if, and I could be totally out base, if there's a metric, consumption per person, which may help us glean how efficient it is, because let's say Osborne has two thousand students now and twenty-four hundred students, you know, a year, well, it's more than that. But as the number of students change, that may affect the consumption. So I wonder if it'd be useful to look at, or if there is a metric out there, consumption per person.
We can, we can, we can look at that. We can bring that back, yes, certainly.
Maybe, but that's my only comment. But thank you for this, and again, I love the fact that we're doing this because it shows that every area, as we talked about with our summer programs in here, we're looking to save money and help our students, which ultimately helps student achievement. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Mr. Hawkins, again, stop-arm camera system.
So we're going to compare, you know, from January two thousand and eighteen to, for the last six months through, well, it's a little more than six months, through July thirtieth of this year, a stop-arm camera. We've issued almost five hundred citations, approximately four-hundred-and-eighty-one of those citations have been paid. On average, they're issuing about four-and-a-half violations per day, or still, on average, in a, in a month's period of time, over, over eight citations a month per bus, on average. All of that sounds really bad, but it is much better than what it has been in the past. So if you go back and you look, we, we'll just show you the citations issued by month for, from January through July. But to, to make these numbers more meaningful, you have to look at where we were at in the past and where we are now. So if you compare the two-seven, two thousand and seventeen numbers to the two thousand and eighteen numbers, you can see dramatic improvement, and this is exactly what we were hoping to accomplish. You know, by initiating this, we will be able to stop or at least hinder, slow down the, the people who are passing school buses while children are loading and unloading. All of these citations are issued based on when the, when the bus is stopped, the stop-arm is out, the lights are flashing, and children are loading and unloading, and this is when people are passing a stopped school bus. So we've made significant improvement from where we were. We still have a ways to go. Some of our areas, more problem areas are, are shown, and we've also made significant improvement in those areas. We, we still have an issue at Center Street that we need to, to work on, but these are the areas also where the board is, wanted us to place signs, and we placed signs in all of these areas notifying everyone that, you know, to please stop for school buses. And so while we, we've made almost a sixty-two percent improvement in the number of citations being issued from almost five hundred in two thousand and seventeen, just in these four or five areas, to approximately a hundred, oh, a hundred and ninety-two in two thousand and eighteen, we've made significant progress, but still, a hundred and ninety-two in just five areas is, is significant, and we need, we're, we're continuing to work on this, and we're not going to stop until we get down to zero, because passing a school bus with children loading and unloading is probably one of the most dangerous things that are, we place our young, our young students in. So that's where we stand today, and we're continuing on with the program. We've had wonderful partnerships with our city police, with the city treasurer, and this program is, is running as, as designed, is running very well. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Demaria.
Yes, please.
Yeah, you're exactly right. This is exactly what we wanted to happen. We would prefer not to make a dollar off of this, because with these percentages going down, our children are just that much safer. And you're right, we, we talk about safety in the schools, and we're concerned about this and that and the other thing, and, and, you know, we need the SROs, and we'd like to have more SROs, and we'd like to have this and that. I think our kids are more dangerous, are, are in more danger on the street than they are in our buildings, and they're less danger, they're in less danger now because of the, the actions this board has taken, and Mr. Hawkins and his people have implemented this, and I just think it's a great thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Seabird.
Mr. Hawkins, can, do you know what, can you attribute the June and July of this year, why the citations were so much more?
I don't know, really. I mean, so July, I don't know why, where we hit so many July at this year versus last year with the summer school buses. I don't, I don't know why they went up in, in both of those, those time periods, but we do have significant increases from year-over-year comparison, but I'm not sure why.
Mr. Albert.
Thank you, Mr. Jeremy. To reinforce Mr. Demaria's point, we have cut the risk of a child being hit by somebody in, by more than half. And in the same period of time, I suspect we're probably actually transporting more children and more miles, because our population has also increased.
Yes.
And every day, every week, somewhere in this country, a child is hit by a car, and unfortunately, several times a year, a child dies all across the nation because people flagrantly violate and pass a school bus in a very unsafe manner. So Mr. Demaria is right, we're not doing this for the money. We're doing it because we need to protect the children of the city of Anassas.
Great point. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hawkins. Next, Student Services, U-Scienc's update, Dr. Stone.
Dr. Newman, Chairman Williams, Vice Chairwoman Kiefer, and members of the board. Of course, we're excited to provide you with an update on the work the division has done with our U-Scienc platform since we first presented information in June. U-Scienc, along with the work on the Student Success Center at the high school, we certainly believe will provide a solid foundation for matching student voice with student offerings and supports at Osborne High School. So this year, Osborne High School and Met students will be, will both be utilizing the U-Scienc platform, which is free of charge to the division. Typically, our career and academic plans focus on student interests. So U-Scienc gives us the opportunity to assess real measures of aptitude, and then they can match those with your interests. It's an online assessment that measures fourteen aptitudes that are most important in career choice, and some of the aptitudes include numerical reasoning, sequential reasoning, and spatial visualization. So students engage in a series of brain games that take five to eight minutes each to complete, and once complete, the students receive positive personalized feedback about their aptitudes and interests, and includes careers that are best suited to both their interests and aptitudes. Custom detailed information on over five hundred careers is provided to include education requirements, the salary range, projected openings, and a day-in-life summary written by a professional in the specific career. Students also receive personalized words, phrases, and statements describing their aptitudes that they can use on college applications, or resumes, or cover letters. Students have access to their profile for ten years beyond when they take the assessment, where they can review careers that U-Scienc regularly updates. The results provide actionable guidance for counselors as they ensure students are taking courses that will prepare the student for a chosen career path, or make recommendations for specific programs offered, such as Governor STEM Academy, Governor's School at Innovation Park, or partner programs such as nursing and ROTC. For parents, they will better understand their child's aptitudes as they guide them through high school and beyond, and certainly, this tool also provides an opportunity for us to connect with our local business partners to enhance our placement of students for internships and externships. So in the spring and summer, our activities, OHS did a pilot administration for some of our students. Students participated in norming studies, so U-Scienc could get ready to put out their middle-school version. We had a U-Scienc breakfast where we were able to connect with business partners, and they could see the opportunities for them to get detailed reports about the workforce that we would be putting out for them. During the school board retreat, all of you were able to take the assessment, so hopefully you gained some valuable information about yourselves and how you work together as a team. And we also participated in contract development. So the U-Scienc platform is being provided to all of our students at Metz and Osborne this school year, free of charge. There is nothing associated with that, other than they will be using us kind of as a platform to show how it works with students. Counselors will receive professional development from the U-Scienc team, really on how to help students take the assessment, but then, once they receive, receive their results, how do we work with them as they see all of that information and help them use it for their college careers going forward or the workforce going forward? We will be administering the assessment in October, and the use of the results will be done over the winter and next spring via Eagle Block activities, class meetings and discussions, as well as individual academic and career planning meetings that are held by our school counselors. So that is the update at this time.
Thank you very much. Any comments? I will add that we did take the U-Scienc test during the retreat, and very interesting results. But one thing it did to solidify this for me was that it was very useful in terms of discerning aptitudes, so I think it'll be very helpful to our students, and I know Mr. Albert will appreciate this, he said free of charge. So it's wonderful our students get this opportunity. So thank you very much for working on this, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, policies, Mrs. Kiefer.
Yes. So the policy committee met last Wednesday, discussed two policies, both related to school and community relations. One policy related specifically to school visitors. It was really just a, a quick update from the VSB, the Virginia School Board Association, making a recommendation. The essence of the policy itself did not change, so we would like to put forward for the board's consideration and discussion tonight, if there's any questions on that specific policy. The other one is, one of the purviews and, and one of the, the big things the board does is create policy. We had developed a new policy, which was sort of under the request of, of board members and thinking about a community need. So the second policy we're, we're discussing tonight, we had a lot of discussion about it, was about political campaign materials. And what we mean by that is, is just for folks to, if people are political candidates, we don't want the schools to be, you know, giving one person an opportunity over others to, you know, do any sort of campaigning. Plus, we really want to keep the main thing the main thing, and make sure that we're not really campaigning in our schools at all, whether back-to-school nights or distributing materials. This board felt strongly about those things, and, and when our parents are going to events or our kids are in school, they're there for their academic achievement. And so we wanted to make sure that we were able to, to keep the focus on our kids, not taking away any opportunity at all in off-school hours and whatnot, their community facilities are available for various events under our, our policies related to that. But we really just felt strongly that we, and, you know, this includes us, when we're running for office, is just kind of keep it off-school grounds while our children and their families are there. And so that's, I, I will turn it to, to Mr. Demaria and Mrs. Seabird also on the committee, because we did have some fruitful conversations, so I've encouraged you both to add to sort of the essence of this policy from your perspectives for the board.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Well, I kind of brought this forward because I'm not quite as eloquent as she is. I don't want our parents being bothered as they're going into our schools for back-to-school night as we bother people when they're going to vote. When we're standing there, everybody knows how you go to vote, and you try and avoid us so that you don't have to talk to us, and you go in and vote, because you know what you want to do. And I don't want our parents having to do that when they're going to back-to-school nights or other events, people standing out front trying to hand you something, and you, we want our buildings to be welcoming and encourage our parents to be there and have no barriers for them to come in. It was my idea, my, my point in supporting this.
Any other comments, board members? Mr. Albert?
I got a question, because I appreciate the tenor and context, especially Mr. Demaria phrased it. My question is one of practical enforcement, is who becomes the cop? And what are the, what are the ramifications if someone flagrantly violates this, and what do we do about it? Do we, is it a trespass order? What is it? It's just something that we need to think about, what we're placing staff in the position if we say, you shouldn't do it. We're counting on honest people being honest people, and if there's somebody out there harassing people coming in, what are we going to do?
I'll take.
We've got to be fair.
Yeah, you've got to be fair. And I, I would hope that people that are running for office are going to want to play by the rules, and, and if it, if they do start handing out material on people on their way in, I would like to believe, and maybe I'm naive on this, that if an administrator or a teacher or someone says, you know, policy says, you know, you're not allowed to do this, could you please stop? I would assume they would stop, and if not, I guess we could call the police, because they're not supposed to be there, and I don't think it would ever come to that. I think everybody that's running for office wants to play by the rules, and, again, maybe I'm naive, but, but I sure hope that that wouldn't become an issue once they are informed that they're not allowed to be there by policy.
I think at the local level, that's true. My fear is that at the national level, with out-of-towners coming and supporting someone, they flat don't care.
I doubt they're going to be there for our back-to-school nights and such.
I don't know.
It's never happened before.
You're right.
And if it happens, the principal can call me. I'm, I'm no more than three minutes away.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm running through this now in my mind. I think that, like with any policy, if it was violated, the first step would be to tell the building administrator, then the superintendent, and then if we needed to raise it, I mean, raise it further, I guess trespass would be the next option, but hopefully, as Mr. Demaria mentioned, if someone tells folks to stop, then wouldn't, but you make a great point, because if folks are coming down for, you know, a senate campaign, this back-to-school night, they're not going to necessarily either know or want to listen. So it's something we should think about.
It's probably the superintendent's problem when he writes the regulation for it, but just an operational thought.
Right, good point. Any other comments? Thank you very, Mr. Hanlon.
The only comment, this, once this passed, should be posted somewhere, maybe on both the board and schools, just so if someone comes in, you can say, it's our policy here, it's posted, you know, that just makes it a little more efficient. It doesn't have to be largely displayed, just wherever they have policies like that.
If we did that, wouldn't we have to do it with all of our policies?
No.
No, I think we could look up to the superintendent of how they want to convey it, maybe.
I mean, you know, they have the policy posted, Middle Weapons on school grounds. You know, there's a couple of key policies that they have posted, and it wouldn't hurt to post this with them.
And one thing that maybe makes sense is, thinking again, send it to all the parties that are involved in the process, maybe the two major parties and other parties, you know, send them this policy and say, this is our new policy, so they're aware of what's going on.
Or to the candidates.
And all, and the candidates as well, right. And to the board of elections, so they know.
And, and so one, probably a, a really important point that I left off when I framed this, was there was a lot of, there's precedence for this, even though it's not an official policy coming out of VSB. policy coming out of VSB. Elba and others on staff looked around locally. This was formed out of others who are doing locally, so as we're developing regulations around this, assuming this board wants to go this direction, we can do the same thing to address a lot of the really good points that have come up tonight. We talked through quite a few, quite a few scenarios ourselves that we can add to that, to that list, because it's a tough, a tough issue to kind of really say, what are we saying? But we did look into local policies. Elba did a lot of research and helped formulate this policy. So the next step would be if the board would like to go ahead and put this on the next board meeting for a vote?
Yeah, so I think we can do this next meeting, but it would be helpful if we had a baseline, a template of what other folks are doing to kind of bolster us and bolster, bolster what we're saying tonight, so we have, you know, scenarios and how we address them.
Okay.
Any other comments? All right, thank you very much. Next up, moving on to the action agenda, financing operations, the draft 2020 budget development calendar, Mr. Hawkins.
So at our last school board meeting, we presented the budget calendar for next school year, for year review, and it's similar to ones that we've had in prior years, that the dates are all very similar to where they were in the past. Do you want to call your attention to some of the to-be-determined, TBD, meetings that are out there? Those meetings will be decided when the school board meets for its organizational meeting in, I guess it's January the 2nd, or it's the 1st of January, whenever that is. So these work sessions are, there's no more, no less of them than what we've had in the past, and we'll be meeting sometime in April, this is generally speaking, like the first week in April, with the city council to present our budget to them. So we'll begin in October, on October the 2nd, with our capital improvement plan. You know, some of these meetings may not be necessary. These are the ones that we have scheduled. With all the discussions that we've had this summer over the funding agreement and the potentially building of the new Dean School, we've been over our CIP a number of times. And so I don't, I think that the board is fairly comfortable with our current CIP, but if not, if they don't want to meet during, during that time, we certainly don't have to, we can cancel the meeting. But these are, this is traditionally what we've done in the past, and so is there any discussion, any questions or concerns about, about the calendar that you have in front of you?
First, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the city of Manassas approve the draft 2020 budget development calendar.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Kiefer, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the draft 2020 budget development calendar. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Albrecht.
I said it last, I'll put it back out there, it doesn't at all affect my ability to vote on it. But I am conflicted on two of the dates, the 2nd of October, I'm at a gala, and the 13th of November, I'll be down at kicking off VSB. I think the CIP, we've got a good handle on, I'm confident that Mr. Williams and the rest of the finance committee can lead everybody through it.
Before I make my comments, any other discussion? Okay, looking at the 13th, since it's public input, doesn't give me as much pause. The 2nd, though, CIP plan does give me a little pause. Do we have a regular meeting on the 9th? The 9th and the 23rd, I guess?
Of.
Of October? Because if we do, maybe we can move that.
Yes, we do, 9th and 23rd are regular meetings.
Hey, you know, adding on meetings, but maybe have that 9th meeting, the CIP work session, and a regular meeting. That way you wouldn't, we wouldn't miss you for two meetings. So basically.
Sir, can you explain that again?
So instead of October 2nd for the work session, move that work session to the 9th. So as part of a regular meeting and a work session, the same night.
To the 9th of.
October. So instead of meeting on the 2nd, meeting on the 9th.
Well, if we've got, if we do have to have a work se, a work session, they're difficult to have sitting here, is the only thing I would have a problem with. This is not conducive to battling back and forth with Peter over different things. I mean, he's way down there.
Right.
Yeah, we like to be face-to-face. Huh? I heard. All right, we could, I guess we could do it in there, but that's kind of, if people did want to, is the upstairs room available?
The joint meeting, the finance meetings?
I don't know. Do we, could we use the upstairs? If it's available, I'm sure we could, but whether it's available or not.
If it's available, I'm sure we could use it.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's try to move it to the 9th, have hopefully a short, limited agenda for the 9th, maybe, as limited as we can. If we can't, we can't. Always have a long night. But I just, I would like Mr. Albrecht there because of his expertise and his experience, and I know he's going to miss one meeting, but I prefer him not to have to miss two because of other commitments.
Just a question on start time for that.
So I would propose that we start the work session at 6:00, maybe. If we have to do it council, break at 7:00, have our regular meeting, and then go back into the work session. Does that seem to be, I mean, it's, it's doable?
I certainly appreciate the consideration and the desire to have me there.
So on the 9th, we'll start at 6:00 with the work session, go from 6:00 to 7:00, have the regular meeting at 7:00 here, as we usually do, be done with that, and then finish the work session, finish it afterwards. Okay. Okay, so with that modification, if Mr. Albrecht is amenable to?
The maker and the second are amenable to that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the maker and the second are amenable to the motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the draft 2020 budget development calendar, with the change of moving the October 2nd meeting to October 9th at 6:00 o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the ayes have it 7-0, and we have approved the draft budget calendar. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Hawkins and Ms. Milford, for getting that together, we appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda is a closed session.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purposes. Discussion of personnel matters, PERS 1819-0095, 1819-0104, and 1819-0105.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Kiefer, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-377, Part A, Paragraph 4 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purposes. Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 4, discussion of the protection of privacy of individuals and personnel matters not related to public business, PERS 1819-0095, PERS 1819-0104, and PERS 1819-0105. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it 7-0, and we're going to take a picture first and then move to closed session.